Gland allegiance to the flag of the United States.
United States. Which stands on a nation under God in the principle of liberty and justice for all. And number three roll call please.
Trustee Bethel.
Here.
Trustee Price here. Trustee Sally.
Here.
Mayor Wilcox.
Here.
Mayor, trustee Winkle Black.
Here.
Everyone is present?
Okay. Changes or additions to the agenda? Hearing now.
No, I have nothing.
Person's not a. Pardon?
Sorry, I, I, I just said I have nothing to add. It's a little delay here. I'm sorry about that.
Person who's not on the agenda, please limit your comments to three minutes and address your comments directly to the mayor. Identify your thinking and address when making comments. Comments should be courteous, civil, and constructive. The town board will make no decision or take action except to direct the town manager or attorney. I see that we have. Of course, that is on the agenda, as is Cat Herter. And the only other that I see yet, yes, is Carol Gregory.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Carol Gregory. I'm eight oh four Wagonville Port, Auburn. And I had a question. Barry wanted me to ask about the letter that he was supposed to receive a week ago or so, or talked about last week. Do you have any updates on that?
I, I don't know whether it come out with the water bill or such. We did drop a line and then I spoke with Bruce. There is access if, if you or Barry want to. You talking about the water.
Yes, that you had discussed with Barry.
Right. And, and Norm. Right, right at the back of your backyard, there's a log on the other side of the fence.
Okay.
Okay, right underneath that log, there's the slides.
Oh.
So that can be pulled apart, a bomb well put in, a one inch bomb well. Uh, bars up to kind of bend back together. So if you need to, you can shut that bomb well off. And do the maintenance on the water by us. If you want to use the water right now and, and speak with Bella, you can do the same. I'm, I'm happy to.
Yeah, Barry knows more about what you guys are talking.
Show, show you this or whatever, but Steve and Tammy, as I've had the one is for like, uh, this is something that. It's, it's the town water. But we have permission to. In these Terrell subdivision, as long as it's feasible. And of course, the town has access to it for the park and.
Okay.
As the first, because it is their water, we, we just, we're in the Terrell subdivision anyway. If you want to put like a throttle guy or a small spring equator at why right there and talk to Bella. On the fence line, you could do that temporarily.
Okay.
Just like, you're welcome to look at. Steve and Tammy do the same thing for their front yard.
Okay.
So they just don't run a free hose, you know, just.
Right.
So we're trying to keep it so that everybody gets a.
Yeah, so it's gonna be on a schedule then?
We haven't talked about a schedule or anything so far because of the, we can't. Uh, Bruce might want to explain more, but. We can't upgrade or put in a six inch line coming down the hill, obviously. So what's been in place since nineteen seventy nine is an inch and a half. By poly and it comes down behind. To the corner of our property and then goes east over to the park. So they can have a whole flow if they need to of that line when the water is on. And it's, it's, it's something that. I'd like to show because when there's other users on the dish, you know, like feel on the thing page so that everybody knows what's going on. And nobody's being. Favor.
Right.
But like I said, it has been in use since our house was built, right? We got a beach in nineteen seventy nine and. One, uh, was on the border in the early nineties. Uh, so.
Okay.
It's been known about, so.
Okay, then I had a couple of other questions. Um, I noticed that as we're coming into town. The first house that will be on the right is getting, how do I make a complaint about, what is the ordinance about the amount of trash that somebody can have in their yard? The very first one need to come in and sign a complaint, get an address of it or. And the very first houses you're coming into town, right?
That I can tell you at this point.
We have no code.
We don't have a code enforcement officer.
Okay.
And Mesa County will not enforce our code.
I thought we had gotten the ordinance about three years ago or four years ago about. That so we can look into it a little bit.
We have a general complaint form, so you're really welcome to come in and fill that out and then I will get it. In the town attorney and he can assist in working to try and get compliance.
And my last thing I wanted to ask or talk about. Um, since school was out, actually, since before school was out, we've had a lot of speeding. Uh, by the clinic. I'm talking for me personally, not for the clinic. And as they top the hill, they're going forty, forty-five. How can we stop that kind of traffic in this, in that area?
Well, we have an officer right there that can.
Okay.
Pass that along and address it to.
Okay.
Mesa County.
I did speak with not this deputy, but the one that was here the end of last week, I believe. A citizen that called into town hall to complain about speeding by the house. And his suggestion was to contact dispatch, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, but to make that complaint to dispatch so that dispatch is aware of what's going on up here. And then they can directly communicate with the deputies. There are times when town hall. Excuse me. Uh, our hours are shortened and so they're here, we're not here, we're here, they're not here. Um, so he suggested just contacting dispatch.
Okay. Cause it's not just the high school students. We are looking at big trucks that don't have a speed limit.
That was the complaint I received last.
Yeah.
It's a daily complaint.
Yeah, good. All right, well, that's all I have. Thank you.
Item number six. Bruce Smith update.
This is making me crazy. Oh, yeah. I have two items that I wanted to talk to you about a little bit. She has some direction. Um, number four of my briefs for the board. We need an annexation agreement regarding rainbow trailer block. I don't know what to say about that agreement. The policy, the ordinances, they basically say that we don't provide. Uh, service outside of the town limits. And this is a piece of property that was clearly annexable. That, that is that they were one-six contiguous at the time that that happened. Um, so why the property wasn't annexed, I have no idea. Um, but I particularly don't understand why there were no tap fees. Um, collected. Um, Jessica just gave me a. Um, piece out of the minutes from the meeting when this was done and. Um, the town administrator made the comment that. The water rate was two hundred percent of the in-town rate. And that would offset the loss of the tap fees. Well, the water rate would have been two hundred percent regardless, so that doesn't offset anything. And the tap fees, the out-of-town tap fees, by the time you got done with the competition, everything in that, that agreement. Be well over three hundred thousand dollars. Um, and I'm looking at, putting on my water plant cap for a second. What you're looking at is about twenty percent of your. Water customers. Um, this is the kind of number that would trigger you to take a real close look, make sure you've got enough. Uh, raw water, the treatment, plant capacity and on and on and on. But for some reason, these things weren't done. I don't know why. I'm hoping that you tell me. That, yeah, there was another, I'm missing a big piece of the puzzle. But, and that's quite possible. I'd be delighted if that was the case.
Have you talked to Fred about it to see why it went down this way? Have you reached out to him?
I have not talked to Fred, Phil, or no.
Are you willing to contact him and ask him what the circumstances of this argument were? Cause I read the agreement and it's very interesting. I had access to the minutes. For the last ten years, just because they're on the website, but I had no access to the actual contract. Mm-hmm. And then do you know if there was an actual, um. Do you have a copy of the resolution that was passed by any chance Dusty or was there one? Cause according to our code, it says that the bulk water cells are passed, the price is made by resolution. And my other question. Yeah. So then my other question to them is, it says that the rate is set by resolution. So over the last ten years, have they occurred any increases in their rate? Or are they at the same rate from ten years ago? Is that something you guys can look up from utility bills? That'd be my questions. Other than why it was done that way.
Well, attorney might kick me for saying this, but. The town could, I think the town can enter into agreements and not necessarily adopt the resolution approving. He would like to see that for the historical record.
Right.
In addition, but.
Right.
In this case, like you said, the ordinance provides that the water rate would be set by resolution.
Right.
I don't know whether that was done. I couldn't.
So I.
I have no idea. I'm asking as much.
Even the code at that time when this was said, says that everybody must pay a tap fee and follow the ordinances. Listed in the ordinances to connect. And it also said that tap fee must be paid at the time of application. So I'm not sure how that step was skipped.
There was a lot of steps that were missed.
Right.
I don't know why. And I'm hoping that somebody has some recollection or. You know, someplace even look. But, uh, I haven't found it. Actually, I should say Dusty has been found it for me. She's looked.
And Fred might have more information for you, why it was done that way.
The other thing that I was told at the time they were doing it, because they dug up and they, they dug up the, uh, the cable line when they were in the Southland Law Line. Was that the state basically mandated the way they dug up for the municipal water, but why the. Tap fees weren't paid or any of that, I wasn't coming to the meetings and didn't have any part of. Of that, uh, the other part of it was that. They were to use the, their existing springs. The water in their lawns rather than what they were, you know, they were using for the trailers and such, but. Uh, there was something said about. Turning over those springs or those water rights to the town. So, but I, you'd have to. You'd have to speak with Fred on that. Maybe, maybe, um. It's gonna take a resolution. Through what the attorney do.
Well, mayor, I was gonna suggest, um. It, it, I looked at this agreement briefly ahead of our meeting and, um, it is, it's old, goes back to two thousand and fifteen. And it's often the case that boards such as, uh, this board may inherit, um, problems from past boards. I'm not. Uh, fully conversant in the history, um, for this, uh, development. But the agreement is reasonably clear in saying that the owner consents to annexation. And so, um, as I understood from your administrator, we haven't reached out to the owner, but I think if the board is inclined. It makes sense to communicate with the owner and say that the town wants to pursue annexation and get this, um, matter resolved. They may find it to be a benefit in the sense that they're paying a fairly hefty. Double rate for a water service that they will no longer have to pay once they're fully annexed in. I don't know about the history about, um, tap fees and so forth, and I guess we'll have to dig into that a little bit. But I guess the first step would always be, you know, board wants to initiate annexation. We should have that discussion with the landowner. And then we can bring it back to you for action.
Makes sense to me. What's your, what's your thoughts on that, Bruce?
Well, this looks like a huge headache to me, but. It's, it's. Needs to be done. I mean, it needs to be done right. I, this is. Way too, if it was a mistake, it was a whole series of them and. This isn't like a Girl Scout troop selling lemonade, you know? It's kind of what it would look like. I have another one that I've, uh, actually I've just failed to get it in the report. We, uh, let's see. The superintendent, I guess is his correct title or, um, FCI. It didn't sound right. For Francis. Let's see, through the grapevine, we got the word Mike Nichols got the word and David to me that the fire department, uh. Needs at least three fire hydrants in Plateau City. And I'd like to tell you that. Uh, no, they're wrong and all that sort of stuff and we, you know, but they're right. Uh, there should have been water hydrant, there shouldn't have been fire hydrants.
For the state.
Every five hundred feet. Um, maybe it might have left a couple out, given the amount of. Um, vacant, basically vacant, uh, extremely low fire hazard ground that's in there, but. Fire hydrants are a minimum requirement of water main extension. And for whatever reason, there were none.
They said that, they stood there and said that the fire department required none. Do you remember that?
Well, that was, yeah, that, that was the fire department, not the state.
So one time the town had water and sewer specs, minimum specifications and fire hydrants are definitely part of it. And what happened to that? I have no idea.
So KLJ missed this? Our engineering department missed this fact?
Sure looks that way to me. Should, I mean, this is standard stuff. I mean, this. And I believe you find it in the uniform fire code as well. Which I think the town adopted years ago, maybe trashed it, uh. If you have, I don't know why, but at any rate, the fire department is right. There's structures in Plateau City, water main is, uh, available. Hydrants for sure should have been there and for sure should have been. Uh, in the vicinity of, uh. The co-op and the, uh. Napa store. And I'm. I thought there'd be one down by the church at least. I, you know, I'm sitting here trying to kind of scale this off in my head.
Right.
You can't really do it, but the, the five hundred foot number where it comes from. Is an old standard for fire departments, two hundred and fifty feet of hose on the truck. So if you got the hydrants five hundred feet apart, you can reach any fire in between. I mean, it's not exactly rocket science. And why it's not in there, I couldn't say, but at any rate, I asked Skylon to give us a, uh. A quote, not a real firm one, because we might very easily get to where we needed to bid this, but, uh. He started it, uh, he said he did three wet taps for the hydrants. And I said, no, but at any rate, the three wet taps. Uh, eighty-five thousand. Uh, so then you're talking plus excavation, installation, fire hydrants, uh. Isolation valves, thrust blocks and all that. So you're talking a lot of money if you go that route. Uh, I wouldn't let that happen. I mean, cut the line and put T's in. Rather than, you know, make a six inch wet tap on a six inch line.
Well, it's still not our line yet, correct? It's still, school's still, it's still their line. It's not done yet, so. Shouldn't they be going back and doing anything else before they hand it over to us?
What little I know about that line was that they, I was told that the commitment was that they would, the school would pay for the line. And fire hydrants.
Is part of it.
Part of the line. So that's what I would say. And I have a feeling that you would hear something different from the school and.
Speaking of that, did you go back and bill, are, are we tallying out our attorney and engineer costs and forwarding them to the school?
I have this staff, but I've not had time.
Okay, okay. It's something.
But I know the staff waiting.
So for tonight, as far as the fire hydrants go, it's a, should have made the list. I, one of the things that I wanted to make you aware of. And it kind of tracks why I put that. Uh, the ICMA Code of Ethics in there just so, so you can get a better feel for. You know, I've heard things out of various board members that you weren't supposed to talk to this person or that person. You weren't supposed to talk about. Town policies or ordinances or anything. Well, that's hogwash. You're not, don't go and say, yeah, the town do this and that, not even the mayor. But to talk to people about their problems and propose solutions and all of that's, as far as I'm concerned, that's a major part of your job. That's. Horrendous is the word I would use for that. Think that's happened. Let's. Forward away from that, okay?
I mean, as long as there's no water flowing through the line right now, this is the time to put in the D's and put in the.
Well, and they're gonna have problems with the thrust blocks on that west, of the whole west side. You know, the. But where the water is already coming up in front of F C. You can see the water going over the line.
Yeah.
So. Uh, but it should have been on the other side of the street. But yeah, with thrust blocks and all that, all that's gonna have to be dug up in concrete and dimensional and rebarred and done a ton of it.
So I have, I have a question for Mr. Smith. Um, Mr. Smith, on, on item number two on your summary. You said that, uh, at this time, you didn't believe that the board is in the position to hire an administrator. And you said there's far too many basic essentials that need to be brought up to date. Uh, now I'm not asking you to right now, but can you provide the board with what you consider to be the basic essent- essentials that we need? Brought up to date before we consider hiring a town administrator?
Something you, not me.
I'm talking to you, Bruce. I'm talking to you. My question, Bruce, was can you tell us what you think are the basic essentials that need to be brought up to date? Before we hire a town administrator? I'm not asking right now to list them, but I would like to see a list for myself and the rest of the board. Of those basic essentials so that we can move on and get ourselves a town administrator hired. I'm mad at about that.
I, I think we have to clean up. The, the, the things that. Were made mistakes on or whatever before we. Uh, bring on an administrator before we can even look at bringing on an administrator. So we don't just hand over them a. Another lost nest.
Yeah. Yeah, they. And this code is not current. It's in the works. The financial records are not current and that's in the works. Uh, the staffing is not current and that's in the works. So. Yeah, when those things are done, it'll be time. That'd be my recommendation to the board, but the board makes the decision, not me. But when you advertise and whether or not it's part-time or full-time. Or what the minimum qualification. There's other administrator, uh, job, uh, descriptions. Some of them say things like, uh. Uh, bachelor's degree or the equivalent. Tell me what the equivalent of a bachelor's degree is.
I think it said masters. Do you have any benefit?
No, it said bachelor's. I don't know what the equivalent is. But things like that. At any rate, it's the board that has to make the decision and it's the board that's gonna approve. The job description that's used for the announcement and it's the board that decides what the timing on that will be. Not me. If it was me, it'd be tomorrow. But I don't know whether this is a part-time or full-time position. You were there. You tell me, what did the board decide?
And I understand that, Bruce. I understand that the board makes a decision, but I mean, you were, you were brought on board as a consultant with, with, you know, your background. So that's all I'm asking you is you, for your advice in terms of what basic essentials need to be brought up to date before we move forward. Because we cannot continue to procrastinate on hiring a town administrator in my mind. We had one not too very long ago. And I believe we should have another one now. We can't depend upon, uh, Dusty to have to have all of those responsibilities that the town administrator should have. So I'm just asking you can probably provide us with a list of basic essentials that you think need to be brought up to date. So that we can move on this issue and get ourselves a town administrator hired.
Gary, if we hire somebody tomorrow, one of two things is gonna happen. They're gonna keep sweeping everything under the rug and not fix it, or they're going to quit. We want everything set up for success. We do not want to rush into hiring another town. town administrator and setting them up for failure. We want things done right, and I believe the majority of the board appreciates Bruce here and appreciates Bruce's opinion and, and respects what his decision is at this time.
And I think you did just point out, our, our financials are, are not up to where they should be. The, the ordinances, we made straight out some ordinances. And uh, work with the attorney and, and get that done, get those resolutions passed. So I personally think that he answered your question very well.
Well, we're obviously not on the same sheet of music, so. But I, I still would like to know what the basic essentials are, using Bruce's expertise to identify what we think needs to be brought up to date. So if we bring them up to date, then let's move forward with making this decision. Cannot continue to procrastinate and pay people contracts that are beyond the amount that we would have paid a town administrator on an hourly salary. We're always concerned about the budget. Well, we ought to be concerned about the budget now. How long's it been since we had a town administrator? Nine, ten, ten months? How long is it gonna take for us to make a decision to move forward?
Six months, Gary.
Well, you know, it's been a long time.
Okay.
It has, but the, the expense just, um, I believe it was the administrator of the Castleberry that was here for two days, two days a week and was getting a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Uh, I don't believe the our, our current that, that Bruce is costing us anywhere near that.
Just feels like it.
Is there anything else? For the rear of day proof?
I'm done.
You know, so Gary's racist. Are you ready to uh, set a, a deadline?
No.
No. Are you, Nor?
Are you? We're all, like, four of us are very content with where we're at, with you trying to repair and move forward.
I mean, just, just straightening out uh, the taxes and such that he pointed out through uh, getting Rainbow Trigger Park online and in town and, and whatnot is gonna save us money. Part of a, a lot of what he's doing is uh, paying his own way or, or saving us money wage-wise, just by getting that done and taking care of. In, in my opinion.
Well, it seems like to me the Bruce is, you know, trying to get back on track for what we need to be. And it seemed like there was a lot that was how do I say it? Wasn't
Mismanaged.
It was a mismanage. And we need to get that fixed. We need to get our books fixed. We can't just hire somebody and say, look at our mess. Come clean it up, you know?
And, and unfortunately, we haven't, it hasn't been done properly since, you know, we, we don't wanna, I don't wanna point any fingers, because I'm sure they, they tried their best, they just didn't know any better as a board or, or as a mayor. I mean, I learn something there every day, but um, you know, un- unfortunately, uh, Frank is no longer with us, um. We had, there was a point, Gary, when uh, our citizens couldn't even come in and get on the three-minute talk to speak to the board because, to, to ask about, was there a possibility of labor unions or to even get on the agenda to speak to the board? And that, that was a previous administrator, so. Those are the things that we, you know, part of this uh, being cleared out all, just like I said with Carol, so we'll be, I'll be on, on the same page and everybody understood and, and uh, I, I need to speak with uh, uh, Mr. Towns, so that we're on the same page and, you know, because we work together on the same ditch. And um, you know, I, I, I don't, the last thing I thought is any animosity, um. We just need to be, I think that the biggest thing we need to be right now is a little more patient. And, and utilize the, the expertise that we're fortunate enough to have here with the staff that we do have, because, I mean, we're talking at least eighty years of experience just to put. Bruce, Dusty, Mike, you know, in their positions, together, they've got that much experience, so. Some things we don't need to use an attorney for, some things we do, some things we don't need to use uh, an engineer for plumbing-wise, you know, for them to take care of it when they can do it themselves. And it's not rocket science. We have the equipment. We have the personnel, and if they deem so, they can come to our administrator and, and if he thinks, you know, they come to the conclusion that we need to involve the, an attorney or an engineer, then I think the board would instead of that, go right along with it, you know, but there's no sense in just keeping. You know, the more we find, the more we find, there's been mistakes made and, and a lot of money wasted over the past years and, and not just three or four, but, you know, close to twenty. Nobody's perfect, but we're, we're trying to make it as efficient and transparent and as we can for the whole entire community.
And let me tell you something. It isn't as easy as somebody makes a list and then I go in there every day and work on that list. I mean, so when Forrest comes in, what do you want me to tell him? Nah, you're not on my list. You go to the board and see if you can get on the list somewhere. Or uh, Michael Allen with his w- water meter problem and everybody had said that the guy had been kind of aggressive toward the staff and all that. They gotta just leave him, leave him there. You all know, Mike. What do you suppose was gonna happen there if the guy decided to be a jerk that day? Well, that's part of my job is to make sure that the staff doesn't get trampled, so to speak. And so I'm not, whether Gary likes it or not, I can't come in here and just work on nothing but this town administrator thing, and even if I could, it's a problem that can't reasonably be solved. When not only are the books not up to date, we don't have anybody that can run all the software. We have to hire the staff so that we can train them on how to run the, the basic software. But what I told you in this report is I'm proposing to solve that problem by contracting that to the CPA. At a cost savings of about twenty thousand dollars a year. Dusty would much prefer it. She doesn't wanna be the, the town treasurer. She wants to be the town clerk. Well, we're running out of options here.
Well, I, I agree with CPA, but the degree and the experience.
Well, especially this particular woman. I'm uh, familiar with her from her work at Debeck for I don't know. More than five years. She knows, she knows the Cassell software inside and out because she's uh, worked on it for more than five years. I think quite a bit more than five years. But at any rate, we don't even have the staff to train. That's the problem. And so setting a setting a deadline, I think is a great idea, but I can tell you what you're gonna get. It's gonna be a worse mess than you got now. One of the reasons Dusty has problems getting things done is because she's looking for things for me. That's what's going on in this building. Remember, the paper files are non-existent. They used to be existing, but they're non-existent. Well, it's pretty damn hard to find electronic stuff unless you can guess exactly what it was called and it was put on an electronic file. Now, I can't buy a spark plug on goof without sitting there scratching my head for half an hour. And then you put the make of the vehicle in there, you put the make of the spark plug. Is it a long way trip? You know, you just would try it with town and corporate files for twenty-five years, twenty years.
Right. So is, is, is the, the CPA, is she willing to take that on?
She can solve this problem. And she can go a long, she can go a long way toward getting the the existing staff, let's put it that way. Getting started with a better understanding of how to run the Cassell stuff, because you're gonna want the, the people in the town hall to do the data entry rather than basically two hundred dollars an hour to type in, you know, Bruce Smith, you know, five, five million dollars. You know, fair estimate, Gary.
She doesn't need to work three days a week and be on the payroll and collect benefits and work things calm.
A lot of that stuff is still gonna be done in-house, and Dusty knows how to do some of it. A long way from all of it, but you ought to be getting, I know this is gonna shock you, but you should be getting monthly financial statements.
I'm shocked. You know, rich deposit summaries and stuff like that. Straight out of Cassell instead of a copied partial document. That'd be awesome.
Since you're, to be sheerly responsible, I think it'd be a great idea for you to have good current financial data.
I completely agree. It's hard to approve expenditures every month when they're partial reports.
Then we make a motion to bring this guy on as a, as a CPA and and get that part of it moving.
Mayor, what I might suggest of you um, is that you get a proposal from this person. And certainly if it's a a qualified professional, um, you have the discretion to appoint somebody either as, as an employee or as a contractor, um, but we can bring it back at the next meeting. You can approve it. Um, what you're describing is, is a really common problem of like, do I, do we hire an employee full-time or can we get by with a contractor who might help us get over the hump and, and get our systems in place?
So let's, so let's make sure that this is on the next agenda and
Get a proposal from her.
Get a proposal from her. And then meanwhile, we can do the due diligence. I mean, we know that she's a CPA, so she definitely has some the experience and then third up that we, we have to, yeah, on the next agenda. Yeah. Any problems with that, Gary?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay.
Is there anything else, Bruce, as far as?
No, I didn't know.
You're very full, okay.
Bruce, I do have some questions for you.
You haven't had enough.
Ten more minutes, it will now over, buddy.
I, I realize that you're very busy. But is there any way you or could you direct staff to get a copy of the building permits for both the um, auditorium and the tower and all inspections that have been signed off on?
I, uh, are you asking the if there was a building permit issued for the auditorium? Is that question number one?
Well, I would like a copy of the building permit issued.
I haven't ever seen it, let's put it that way. I called the chief building inspector and he told me that one had been issued.
I walked the building for months and there's no building. I, I personally, I've done remodels and you have to post it. Um, can we get a copy of that? Maybe you guys can get in touch with Carla and ask for a copy of the actual building permit and all.
It shouldn't have, it's a town record, not a Carlo record.
Okay.
So if we had a copy of it, it would be in
And any inspections that have been completed?
Well, nice to be posted on the building and or if it's inside their little contractor trailer.
There was a reason that I kind of alerted that there's why I went in. So when I asked the chief building inspector, Daryl Bay, um, so Daryl, what inspections are being made? He said, well, there are no inspections required for the structural work because it's under the immediate supervision of a an engineer. I presume it's all in structural, but maybe not. But the way he said that made me wonder whether or not he was kind of rounding that off, if you know what I mean. He said that uh, uh, standard inspections would be made as required for plumbing, building, plumbing, uh, electrical and mechanical inspections. And I would have thought that would already have happened, but it seemed to sound as though that hadn't happened, so.
Right.
So I'm back to wondering whether or not the, there really is a building permit out there.
Well, I personally called them, gave them the address, and I spoke to three different people and they said no building permit existed, but I don't know if I was speaking to the right people. I do know from personal experience, you have to have one for plumbing, electric, roof, windows, HVAC, these things are all happening over there. I, I'm kind of concerned that there's no building permit inspections going on.
We could ask our contractors that's been doing the work, you know? I know there have been third-party inspections going on, but they should, they should have a, a record of that accounting inspections as well if there is a permit.
I promise you, I'm at least as concerned as you are. This is a public building and the the thought that add with inspections might not have been made uh, is pretty concerning. Put it mildly.
I agree. That's, that's all. Oh, yeah, that's all.
Moving forward, uh, I have number seven, res- resolution number sixteen, series twenty twenty-five, res- a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute legal services agreement between the town of Auburn and Duffer Waldeck LLP.
My motion to approve resolution number sixteen, series twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the legal service agreement in the town of Auburn and Duffer Waldeck LLP.
I started the motion.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Gary?
No, no, thank you.
Gary, none, man, we have a vote, please.
Trustee Sally?
Yes.
Trustee Winkleblack?
Yes.
Trustee Beppo?
Yes.
Trustee Price?
Yes.
Mayor Wilcox?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
I do.
I have number eight. Resolution number fifteen, series twenty twenty-five, a resolution of the board and trustees of the town of Culver, Colorado, approving an updated employment agreement for the interim town clerk and treasurer.
Mayor, I wanted to interject something there. I did talk with Dusty about that agreement. I reviewed the agreement ahead of our, our meeting today. Um, and I know that you wanted to make a, as I understood, a formal appointment to her as town clerk. The agreement that was brought to you has a ninety-day term on it. If it ends after ninety days, um, and we have to bring it back to you. Um, and I, I was thinking that we might be able to save some time for the board in the future if we simply brought you an agreement that has an indefinite term to it. Um, and again, the, the town clerk serves at the pleasure of the board. You can terminate an employment relationship uh, at any time. Uh, so you really don't need to have a term there and it really is just sort of making work for you. So if, if the board wants to do that, I could, uh, you could table this. I could bring this back. I could make those changes, bring it back for your next meeting and have an agreement that's, has an indefinite term to it. Again, just trying to avoid needless repetition and extra work from the board. And I did talk with Dusty about that and if she's okay with it, uh, well, you guys can ask her about that.
That makes sense and in the end it'll end up saving us money by not repeating all this over and over.
So I, I guess it'd be just questioned whether you want to take a look.
My problem is we have to pay her a lot of money right now because things are screwed up. You know, and the goal is to eventually bring on some supportive staff and lighten her load and this and that, so once she becomes a full-time employee with benefits, I think then we'll transition into a different pay rate with benefits. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, so this is not, I, I was under the impression that this agreement was sort of the endpoint for her, uh, in terms of her employment relationship.
This is a contractual temporary agreement. We, we don't know where to go on where the support staff, we don't know. Right now, her workload is very heavy and she's and she's not getting any benefits, so her hours, so, so until we're ready to move forward with those kind of decisions of the recommendation of Bruce or I suggest we stick to this agreement until we can move forward. You see what I?
Yeah, and I'm late to the party here, so.
You know, there's more reasons that she has some other commitments is another reason why things are time constraints are on that. She needs to, she will, you know, it'd be nice to finalize her pay. And if you wanted to leave the, as you suggest, leave the expiration date off of it, you can do that, but it
Right.
Leaves you open to criticism that you wearing on the things that Gary's just complained about, the door and me.
Right. I'm okay with leaving it at ninety days, reevaluating it at that where she, how she feels and how where my local staff and I'd love to see her get on full time and get some benefits and this and that. I don't know if she wants to yet. Some days. So I would say, suggest by all hands. Just because this is a ninety-day agreement doesn't mean that we can't revisit it before that.
You can, you can take it at any time at all.
Right.
Yeah, hopefully you could resolve this when she knows exactly what her work schedule is also.
And, and it will help out probably when we have them and on the next agenda, talking about the, the CPA and stuff, maybe that'll take some of your workload off and be some more supportive of it.
The administrative assistant would take more workload off.
Yeah. And we can't leave Melanie forever.
No, and Melanie's actually getting ready to go on, um, she's gonna be gone for quite, quite a while for a while.
Is that something that you can put on the next agenda there?
No, I'm working on a bunch of work.
Yeah. Well, I move we approve resolution number fifteen, series twenty twenty-five, a resolution of the board trustees of the town Culver adopting and approving an updated employment agreement for the interim town clerk treasurer.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? There in the end, they have a vote, please.
Trustee Winkleblack?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Trustee Stalin? Trustee Bethel?
Yes.
Trustee Price?
Yes.
Mayor Wilcox?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Imagine that.
I have no, I have discussions regarding water service. Perhaps was brought to you by four staffs and Bonnie.
Beth? Beth. Hello, town of Culver again. Kind of getting to be in here quite a lot. Um. Yep, I'm here to discuss and request that you upload the previous board's motion, second and unanimous vote to issue two out-of-town water taps. Um, I'll give you the presentation I gave then, so everybody's up to speed. Permission requested to approach and distribute. You'll have to forgive my coloring, but it's the same coloring they saw.
Isn't that a reason you don't want to annex?
Uh, I'll get to that, yeah. Hindsight, um, you know. Is twenty twenty, they say. We started to market this property as an eighteen-acre parcel. There was a lot of concern about being annexed. And I know that you can still be agricultural, you can still have livestock, like I, I chalked it up just to the stigma of being in a town's limits. Um. Everybody that was gonna buy the eighteen was gonna split it. Bonnie, um, very smart business lady, said it's dumb for someone else to buy it and split it when we could just split it and move through the process. The only option through the county without annexation, annexation options were unlimited. But the only option through the county was a rural land division. We could split the lot once, as long as domestic water was available because the parcels are under the thirty-five acre and less than the nineteen seventy-two grandfather rule for a well and grow brick wells are no good anyway. Um. We hired a land consultant. We didn't want to mess this up on our own. We hired a professional. Um. I initially asked if out-of-town water caps were still a thing and I was told, yes, they are. Um, they've been issued on and off for a long time. Um, I probably am the only one that's ever presented to a board for it, but that was fine. I proposed on March nineteenth. Um, just like this. So on this map, the original eighteen is in black. Um, the red line is where it was decided to break it in half. Um, lot one to the north, uh, joins Andy's future subdivision. Um, lot two to the south that joins, uh, the Leonard Miller property. Um. It had been owned by John Helker almost fifty years. Uh, as we started to do this process, we learned there were, um, there were some troubles. Uh. The the chain link fence around the water tank, the water tower, um, followed an inaccurate survey. So we didn't want to market property where there was an encroachment. It went both ways. So in February, uh, February twenty, twenty twenty-four, uh, we presented to the board, asked if, uh, the board would be willing to do a boundary adjustment because we were going through surveys anyway. Um, asked the board to contribute fifteen hundred for the survey. That didn't make it in the minutes and I've not yet found a meeting to listen to it. If it was in the motion, I would request the fifteen hundred down the line. Have not made it to that yet, obviously. Um. You see the, the pink strip, uh, below the green water tank fence? That's the gravel access to the water tank. Um, the title insurance, the county, the surveyor, nobody was able to find the deeded easement to the town Culver for that. I'm sure Bruce did it. Bruce never messed anything up. It may not have got filed. I don't, I don't know. It's, it's neither here nor there. Um, we said, we'll take care of it. Um, we had it surveyed. That was actually the last time I was here. Um, you guys signed off on us giving you your driveway, no harm, no foul. Um, the other thing on the top of the page, you see the, the blue line. Um, before we sold this parcel, we wanted to make it easier for the town of Culver for future development going east, which may include us or may not include us, um, by granting a twenty-five-foot domestic water line easement. Um, that also, we just finalized. This has been an eighteen-month process that was supposed to take six. They always take more than they're supposed to. Um. The yellow, we were actually trying to do a boundary line adjustment with trustee Winkleblack before he was a trustee. Um, unforeseen circumstances, we were unable to do that. He was very patient and accepting of us having to not be able to do that. Um. So that was the plot. Um. Before I presented, we, I came in to the current administrator and the current town attorney and he said, well, if you're not gonna annex, you have to have a pre-annexation agreement and you have to present to the board. I said, okay, that's, that comes through the administrator. I said, that's fine. He drafted a, uh, pre-annexation agreement. Um. Is, do you have that? Is that in your board packet?
Uh, no, I, I.
You probably have it because you looked at another meeting. Again, repetitive approach. This is the minutes with the motion, the unanimous vote to approve this. And the next staple is the pre-annexation agreement. The only thing in minutes is, uh, the motion itself. Uh, trustees, it's yes, sir, uh, move to approve the pre-annexation agreement and the purchase of out-of-town water taps for Mr. Townes's newly acquired land contingent upon the division of the two properties seconded by trustee Melkoff. Um, the most important thing there is everything was contingent upon the division because it would be a waste of time if at some point the county had thrown this out. Um, I, when we came in on June eighteenth to purchase these water caps, I was thinking that we had executed that agreement and I actually called our land planner, dug through my stuff. Um, and then I looked at it, we couldn't execute it because it's address specific. So we were, we got our addresses two days before we come to buy water caps. We couldn't buy water caps without addresses. It was another one of those steps in the process. So, um. Mr. Smith, uh, probably frustrated after some of his digging, uh, told me no and told me I had to come to the board. And that's fine, you're a new board, uh, new staff. I'm happy to to come up to, to speed on things. Um, in this pre-annexation agreement, uh, there are triggers. Um, I've highlighted a few things in the agreement. Um. The previous administrator and attorney drafted, uh, owner's property hereinafter described is not presently desirable of being annexed to the town Culver. Um, maybe because of the size of the lots. I know how you feel and I think they do too, but um. The next highlight is, uh, number one, the service provided, and, and this is the important one. The town agrees to provide owners with the following municipal water or service, water for one single-family residence. The property is further than four hundred feet from a sewer line and will be served by an ISDS for wastewater. So I did not ask for out-of-town sewer task, just water task. Um, also very important in this agreement, the town will provide said service subject to the rules, regulations, charges, fees and ordinances of the town Culver as are now in effect. Uh, no discounts. Lines will be borne by owners, paid for by the owners. Owners agree to pay all system improvement fees at the out-of-town rate. Reimburse the town for all engineering, legal and associated fees and costs that incur. The more I read this, um, the more we should have just annexed right out of it, but we didn't and that's, here we are today. Um, section eight, annexation. I requested that, uh, attorney knew, um, define desirable for annexation and I thought that there should be some triggers. Uh, I recommended a few of these through the administrator. Uh, desirable for exa- annexation shall be restricted to one when any property adjacent to the property desires to annex into the town. Or two, the town constructs a water main along the north prop- property line of the property for which owners agree to provide to the town an easement on its subdivision plan processed by Mesa County. As you know, that, uh, easement has been granted. That, that's the town Culver forever. Another, um, fun expense, payment of impact fees. Uh, owners agree to pay the impact fees in effect at the time of execution prescribed by the Culver Municipal Code and town resolutions for the single-family residents to be constructed on the property. Um, and that's above and beyond the two hundred percent out-of-town water rate.
Did you find the impact fees?
Uh, no.
Because they're not listed in our municipal code. I know the previous administrator said you have impact fees, but she cannot produce the amount of impact fees and there's none.
I had emailed out of curiosity, because if the impact fee was five million dollars, um, you know, obviously it was a no-go. I did not get the impact fees.
There are none in our code.
Well, as soon as you have them, we will be bound in perpetuity for them. Um, according to the pre-annexation agreement. Did you, Mr. Mayor?
This is, this is part of the reason why, uh, we first came up, the, and he ended up doing a, a lot line rearrangement, but the, uh, I don't know, well, it's last name. Anyway, uh, Hope, okay, that was the city limits. Was the, uh, east side of Terrell subdivision, it's lying going up there. Uh, so Elisa Valvez's property was not in the, in the city as the, uh, same, same as the earlier church, the only part was, was gone, was but Carl Bossentech needed that lot in order to put in a cul-de-sac and, and cut off a little bit of that lot and put in a fire hydrant in that cul-de-sac. But it was much less expensive for him at the time to go ahead and annex the whole twenty acres. The thirteen and the seven and whatever building has, well, it was already in the city limits because I was already in the Terrell subdivision. So it was cheaper to annex the twenty acres and the town did a lot of rearrangements than it was if you paid Mesa County the impact fees and all of the other stuff that went along with it that just made it a lot simpler for him to and then he was able to go ahead and pay in-town taxes.
Hundred percent. And we would have sold this property probably ten months ago.
Right.
Um, which would have been a bonus as well. Um, which would have been a bonus as well.
The, the other thing was before, I mean, when he was going to build a house himself on the thirteen acres. Where the Gordons built. And um. Before that was done, they went through rezoning on the old, the old board uh years ago. And that was, that was on, you know, our one or residential. But the uh, there was a public notice. Uh, the, the Gordons asked if there was a problem with a livestock or whatever. And try and be neighborly because there were several of us that boarded their property. We went ahead and agreed to. Let them uh go agricultural, basically agricultural and residential, so. It, it worked out.
Sure, um, the. So. The expense of this thing, and that's what in hindsight made it clear that annexation was the answer. Um, we've spent eighteen grand. Um, and, and, and I actually thought it was higher than that. When I added the invoices, um, it, it came to eighteen grand. We were quoted five thousand on out-of-town taps. We didn't have a contract and I understand that the price is nine thousand and I've never asked for the five. Because again, Bonnie and I are both business people. Um, it is what it is. That's why I mentioned if the fifteen hundred for the survey. Boundary line adjustment isn't in the actual motion, then we pay for it. We, we get it. This, we're just trying to get through this process and, and do it right. The nine thousand dollars, twice the in-town rate, and then the two hundred percent water fee, twice the in-town rate. I, I did some math and I have to thank Lottie Gruden for coming in tonight. Uh, I had no idea. Uh, she has ten acres. It's zoned agricultural. And last year, um, she paid the town of Coburn a hundred and fifty-four dollars in town of Coburn taxes. I don't expect you to remember that. Public information, public information. So with everything that we've already done, the two hundred percent rates, the double water tap. Forty-five hundred dollars, the additional tap divided by a hundred and fifty-four dollars. We have, as you see, we have like a, a ten and a seven and a half or a nine and a half. We have two ten-acre agricultural parcels. It's twenty-nine years of that hundred and fifty-four dollars. So financially. It's a no-brainer to take our money and run, especially since the board on March nineteenth. Did move second and unanimously approved this. That's honestly why I don't understand why I'm here. I, I cannot imagine another board. Um, going backwards on a previous boards. When the due diligence was done, um, there was no illegalities. Um, in all honesty, I knew that board as well as I know this board with the exception of Mister Staley. I've. Never officially met you before. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Um, and with that said, while I had a good working relationship, a professional working relationship with the previous administrator. Uh, Mister Smith has been a longer friend and customer than that, so. No nepotism, no anything else. I, I honestly see no reason um not to proceed with this.
I have some questions.
Okay.
Your property, where are you tying into the water?
Um, we're not. Uh, uh, the, there is a north and south water line from the tank. That the parcels would acquire their taps there. Um, that's where the natural gas telephone, if anybody cares. Um, that's all the utilities. See the lines through the yellow. That's the, the town north and south water lines, natural gas wa- uh pipeline, and then the telephone lines. So all taps would come from the west side of the property.
Where's, where's the closest sewer line?
Um, down line arm is the nearest sewer line.
I'm not sure how far the sewer, sewer line goes.
No, I don't either. So I did a little bit of digging.
Out the front of Gale J on the off the side of the road.
Right, uh, permission again.
Uh, lift, lift station was there. Septic.
Right. Um, the county process, but it has septic. Um, the state four-hundred-foot rule refers to the county. Um, and the county actually last year updated theirs in July of twenty-four. They even removed the four-hundred-foot. Um, they still hold the uh state given authority if it's unsafe. If there's not enough acreage, if it's in a floodplain, the county still has the, that authority to force high-end deceptive. But you'll see through that um note from our senior county planner, Pay Hall, that um, the county. In the planning process did not require sewer tie-in. The town of Coburn did not comment as they've already. Written a pre-annexation agreement saying the property will be on septic. And, and that was where that was.
Our code says at such time as public sewer runs within four hundred feet of the boundary line.
Right.
And we don't know if we have a source within four hundred feet of the boundary line?
The, as I um highlighted in the county code, and I understand your code is different. I don't, um, there says not feasible. The. The previous town administrator in working with the attorney, the, the building sites on these are clear and there is one. Down the road from trustee Winklebacks. So the, the actual property lines may be within the four hundred. Whereas nobody was requiring it. I've not looked at that. Um, the. Building sites are expected to be on the east end of these parcels. Granted, there's no building envelope. We can't dictate where they build. But it's over, these are uh adequate forties, so that top line is thirteen hundred feet. So we're a thousand feet from the property line, let alone the distance to the existing sewer. Or they will be, I should say. I'm not, I don't plan on building.
The code goes by boundary line, not by building site.
Right, I understand that. I don't know the authority of the town of Coburn over the county. And I think that's where I relied on the county's process to say it was gonna be on septic.
Well, I was just wondering if that's why you didn't want to annex, so you didn't.
Oh, no.
Spends of tying into the sewer.
Uh, no, because that would be pushed onto the buyer. And even if we had bought taps previously in annexation, they would have been cheaper. A hundred percent. It was the stigma of people not understanding that the town of Coburn, um, I mean.
May, may not let them have agriculture or.
Well, no, it doesn't mean that. It's just a stigma of being annexed. Um, my experience on June eighteenth in here. Kind of gives me the stigma not wanting to be annexed. Um, it was not a, it was not, not a pleasant time. Um, no hard feelings, it's all business. Um, but, but the only reason, I mean, look, we, we, we're about to, we need two taps. So that's an extra forty-five hundred per tap. So that's an extra nine thousand. Eighteen thousand, it probably would have cost us four or five. We've spent all kinds of money that we didn't need to if we just would have. Just trying to uh please our, our purchaser base is what it comes down to.
So in the code, it says it's the policy of the town to decline or extend water or wastewater treatment service to property lying outside the corporate limits of the town unless the lack of municipal services. Creates a real hardship upon the owner of the property. The property is capable of being annexed into the town within a reasonable time, blah, 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 blah. So I'm trying to understand why the previous board approved this. I know obviously nobody was referring to the code at that time when they were giving um. In-town tap fees to everybody out of town the last fifteen years.
I, I have terrible timing, then don't I?
Yes, you do. You sure ran and bought it and made point to the wrong price.
That, that would have been immoral as I did not have addresses.
Well, it didn't matter.
Well, now you tell me. Again, now you tell me. Um, it, the, the hardship here would be that we couldn't. We couldn't split it without the taps. And, and I think when, when I proposed the big picture, I do believe that. The attorney referenced the code and said you're supposed to annex. Um, in my roundabout communication, uh, but. This chunk of, this chunk of ground, um, they, he backed off, I believe, and left it to the board. I think when the board saw everything that we were trying to fix and everything we were trying to do to them, do to them, do for them, I stand corrected.
Now I get it.
Yeah, exactly. Freudian slip on my part. Uh, they didn't have a problem with it.
Right. We're trying to set a new precedence where we refer to our municipal code. Um, I understand that you were, you're pretty, this decision was already made and I understand your frustration and I. I'm in agreeance with you that, but I would love for future reference to set a precedence to refer to our municipal code. But I also feel like an exception should be made because you've done a lot. To get this far.
That's much appreciated. As, as you know, uh, we would never have spent a dime as the annexation. Without the previous board's. Approval to do this.
Why couldn't you split it without?
I know.
Two, two fees?
Why couldn't I split what?
You said you could, you couldn't have split the property if you didn't do two taps or something?
I need a tap for each.
Right.
Each parcel.
Right.
Um, we couldn't split the property without the water taps. That was the county requirement. So we started with the county and then came to the town of Coburn, presented the project and. This is where we're at.
So my, my only other curiosity is, is the, is the lot that you have. Set aside or was, was. Going to work with uh trustee Winkleback at the time, is that gonna stay?
It stays in lot two.
So, okay, so it's gonna stay in lot here?
Yeah.
And you have a.
Well, yeah, Mayor, I, I was gonna say, first off, I s- I see you guys trying, trying to deal with. Maybe decisions or actions that have been taken in the past and, and that's always a challenge. Um, and I see an applicant that wants to get moving on his project, which I respect and, you know, it seems like it should happen. You've already got a, a simple land split through Mesa County's.
Correct, we have our addresses.
Yeah, so you got a simple land split then. Um, but you need, you need water taps to serve the development there. You're, as uh trustee Price pointed out, your, your, your code is very clear in saying that um, that. First off, you don't have an obligation to serve properties outside your municipal limits. That's, that's basic law. Um, but you've also enacted an ordinance that says, um, if you want municipal type services like water and sewer, water or sewer. You need to annex in and you need to consent to annexation. And so what I hear, what I heard is that. This agreement has been approved by a past board and pre-annexation agreement, but apparently nobody signed it. Um, and so, because it's an interesting land, it probably is not valid yet. I, I think what we need to do is get a pre-annexation agreement in place, signed by all parties. That provides for this applicant to consent to annexation. Uh, as a condition for getting water service. Now, I, we probably also need to look at the sewer question and I. That's primarily an engineering question is where's, where are the pipes relative to this property and this, this board, uh, I would suggest. That's, that's no way to run a river. You, you can't make those decisions in the abstract. You need to have an engineer look at. You know, where, what the distances are and whether it's configured properly and that stuff.
Well, the other, the other concern that I have is, is the uh fire protection, what we just run into with the school.
It, it says clearly that the town, and I did not highlight that, I apologize. The town does not guarantee fire protection services. So that would obviously affect the homeowner's insurance, but it would not be a liability on the town. It's strictly domestic. Um, and as I said, it became clear that we couldn't execute these, which.
Are you saying you don't, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, sir, but are you saying you don't want to annex in? That's kind of whatever.
Yeah, at, at, at this point, we've gone a long ways and spent a lot of money and have all the pieces and have prior board approval. Not to annex at this point. Um, I do believe with the triggers, uh. What, the property to the east, which Bonnie and I still own, or the property to the south. I can see them annexing. There's, there's not much room for the cold, town of Coburn to go anywhere. Um, I can see these annexings. So in the, in the twenty-nine years of a hundred and fifty-four dollar town of Coburn taxes, it would take to cover. Our additional forty-five hundred dollar out-of-town tap fee. I see annexation in ten and fifteen years triggered by one of these two, uh, one of these two items. Uh, Bonnie and I did, now that we have our addresses and understand why these weren't um executed. We have executed copies with us tonight.
What I would suggest, Mayor, is um, I, and again, I'm coming at this for the first time. I'll look at the, the agreement. I mean, what, what's weird is. I hear you saying you, you, you want town services. But, but you don't want to annex, but on the other hand, you're willing to sign a pre-annexation agreement, which authorized annexation.
That would absolutely force us to annex at some point.
Yeah, and so my suggestion is, uh, I, I'll look at the draft agreement that you've provided. And, uh, and we can break this back and put it on the agenda properly and say. Well, and I, I don't want to hold him up, but I, but I would say you, you need to have a board approve a pre-annexation agreement as a condition for you. Getting your water tap and you gotta pay your fees, et cetera.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
I'm sorry.
No.
Oh, there, that's what I heard on the eighteenth. I'm gonna get out of.
Listen, an hour ago, we were dealing with another decision made by a prior board that was totally impr- impractical. And in violation of their own damn ordinances. And so now we're gonna create another one. And, and what agreement are we talking about? The town never executed the agreement, correct? So what agreement did the, did the board approve?
The, the one that was in the board packet, well.
No, that's what you said. With the, with the board hand, who knows? You told me that what you, you had was a redline copy, right?
Well, that's, that's what I emailed you because that's what I had on my phone that day. And I apologize for that. What the board has.
Drop the apology.
Oh, okay.
Bottom, bottom line is, the board's gonna make a decision to abide by its ordinances or to violate them or amend them. And if you amend this ordinance, you just take the word real hardship out and put in. Modest hardship.
Right.
I mean.
Come on, are you talking about amending your ordinance? I, I haven't heard that.
Well, if you're gonna violate it, I propose that you amend it.
Were we not issued a variance? We, we meticulously, as I laid out on the night, went through all the process that's gonna cost us a lot more money.
Hey, excuse me, sir, but I would say, uh, this is me, I'm like, the party again. You're not, your property's not in this town limits, so the town can't grant you a variance. A variance is a, it's a legal device. It's only granted for property that's within municipal limits. So, I mean, what I see here is you want to develop this property and that's admirable. We just have to kind of go through the process correctly and I, I, I don't see any agreement that's been signed by anyone. Um, and so that has to be resolved. Um, and so. Uh, I'd be happy to look at this agreement and make a recommendation to the board.
Um, we couldn't sign it because we didn't have addresses. We got our addresses on the sixteenth. We realized that.
County issues addresses. They would issue an address when you went and requested.
Executed on our parts. You can see that they were determined on addresses for the parcels. Um, one welcome to.
Yeah, why can't I do this? I. This is no way to resolve this. I think what we probably need to do is, we, we need to table this. And that, that would be my recommendation. I'll review this with um, with the applicant and we'll see if we can uh. Try to get, come back with a, a decision that you can make, um, and then hopefully addresses everybody's concerns.
Is that a, is that a conflict of interest for, for the town attorney to be?
You can make a decision right now by tabling.
I will have to say, um, on the eighteenth when I was here, Bonnie and I spent about an hour with Mister Smith. Talking through this. Again, he's a friend. Um, and he said, well, I'll talk to the mayor. Uh, Mayor Wilcox came in and they went to the office and I said, well, Bonnie and I are gonna go have lunch. Everybody go lunch just out of jovial nature. Um, when we came back, uh, I was told that the uh board had not seen. The pre-annexation agreement.
The current board or the previous board?
I was told that the previous board had not seen the pre-annexation agreement. And I said it was in their board packet. They read it, they moved and approved it. And Kendall, Mister Mayor, says, I remember discussing it, but I don't remember voting on it. So I think he may have. Said that to Mister Smith and that's why Mister.
I didn't say, I didn't say.
Oh, no.
Mister, Mister Smith and all, but I know what you're going through because I went through it from two thousand and six. The only difference is. It wasn't my idea. Town came, came to me to, to divide it up, trying to straighten out easements and mod lines and such. So, and I did, just like you say, I paid fifteen hundred dollars of survey fees, which at the time, tap fees were fifteen hundred dollars. The difference being. The town went ahead and ordered the survey. They went ahead and, uh, drilled everything and they, uh. Registered it with the, the county. So that's the only thing. It's taken almost twenty years. To get that straightened out so that I don't have to pay two hundred dollars. For the property tax on something I can't use. It's just the back section of the park.
Sure. No, I get that.
Well, and for you, this is nothing personal. We're just trying to set a new, like, precedence where we follow our own municipal code.
Agreed.
For everybody. It's not, it's not about us getting you. It's about us following our code. And setting a whole new standard that's been gone for a long time.
I, I wholeheartedly get it. I, I do appreciate your comment of this was previously executed.
Right.
And, and it was that board that, um. If, if this is reneged, um, we've wasted all that money. Um, and at this point, uh, we have. Have the division by the county, uh, we can sell assistance that's gonna come from your water tower anyway. And there's, there goes two nine thousand dollar tap fees and a two hundred percent water rate. Um, it was clear talking with Mr. Smith that day that he's, um, I felt he was extremely unhappy on how things had run. Um, and I understand that you have to fix some things in the past, but sometimes like COVID. You can't go back and there's no sense in trying to fix it. This is a simple. Deal where the town is gonna make a whole lot more for their water and sewer fund. And again, the trigger will happen before the hundred and fifty-four dollars per ten acres comes on. I a hundred percent appreciate a new attorney and the, the fact that looked over the agreement. Um, it's extremely unfortunate that the new attorney and the board did not have this information. From eighteenth on, so that we could have settled it tonight. And I feel that falls in one of two places and my money's on one. So.
Forrest, let me ask you a question. So, um, there's a contract that said to provide services and pre-annexation agreement. And that contract was made and entered on the nineteenth day of March in two thousand and twenty-four. All right, are, and so, and, and you obviously are aware of this contract. So is this contract still in agreement with you in terms of the terms of the contract? Are you, are you prepared to abide by that contract or would you rather something else be written up?
Oh, I a hundred percent, uh, with this contract. We, as I mentioned, we've already executed this. It was one of the integral steps through this eighteen-month process. So. Yeah, we're, we're.
Then it just seems to me that we already have this contract written up and, and our lawyer can take a look at it. And then on, you know, on the March fourteenth, uh, March nineteenth meetings, uh, to, to quote the, the minutes, it said, this agreement is not yet complete. But has been created as a sign of good faith for all parties to quote unquote, agree to be nice and get some water taps installed at the property. And I think we ought to honor the previous board. There's nothing illegal about what's going on. We already have a contract to provide services and pre-annexation agreement. And ta- let our lawyer take a look at it and let's just move on and, and give these individuals their, their taps and, and move on. I, I mean, when I got my tap, I didn't have to go through anything like that. I don't understand what the hiccup is.
The, the hiccup is that the previous board didn't follow the law, so it was illegal.
Well, then let's have the lawyer take a look at this contract and let's, let's, let's change it as appropriate and move on and get it taken care of.
Mayor, we'll help you if you wanna table this tonight. I'll look at this and, and sir, I'll need to get your contact information so I can get it from somebody. And we'll try, we'll bring this back to you and we'll try to have this in a forum and I'll, I'll lay it all out so that you guys can decide what you wanna do.
Well, I, I learned that we table this so that we can, the bottom line is, I, I think we need to follow the, the laws or our own ordinances. And like I say, I ran this myself and I would have been much further ahead financially if I were to do this. Paid the tap fees because they were fifteen hundred dollars a piece rather than wait twenty years after the down had already. Done what it had done and, and, uh. Approved that there were several other things done during that time that didn't follow the process, but.
Right, the board corrected where they had made a mistake. And in this case.
They didn't, they didn't correct it. They, they had to follow the law. In fact, um. And.
The board picked a twenty-year inaccuracy, a, a, a reneging on a, on an agreement. Is that correct? Do I understand that right?
Well. That they reneged, but it took. And they had no idea. I came back time, I, I can't tell you how many times I came before so many boards and, and, well, he died. The thing, the thing was, I had to come up with the documentation and the medicine, the fact that it had already been. Changed at the county level and was, was a done deal at the county level.
Sure.
Otherwise, it never would have happened by my point in life.
No, we didn't.
It would, it would have been cheaper. Intenuance on paying the tap fees.
Right, give you if you'd like. Oh. I believe so.
I'd like to just say for the record, I know everybody says the very small amount that we collect on taxes that goes to the town of Culver and it's all that we stand to lose.
Oh, no.
There's also sales tax, there's also, um, Amazon tax, there's also, um, when everybody registers their vehicles down there, they would have been the total money. There, there is a lot of money other than the, the real estate tax that we collect. There's a lot. There's cigarette and alcohol tax, there's.
No, and, and I, I was.
There's more than that.
I was not purposely trying to simplify, um, just an example of how much that forty-five hundred.
Either the vehicles get registered.
Okay.
If you have an address, now, and then that, that initial number gives us more funding.
Sure.
So, so it is more important than just that.
Base.
Two hundred, which I thought the out-of-town, um, rate, monthly rate for their water bill was a hundred and fifty percent or. Two hundred percent for the tap and a hundred and fifty for the, again, like.
I, I could be, I stand corrected on that. I, I didn't look that up.
Well, I, I flipped through the minutes of the last few years and it's kind of. Yo, 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 yo.
I, um, you know, uh, I said it with him here, we were treated terribly on June eighteenth. Um, I was called a liar, basically without the words. I was told that the board hadn't seen the pre-annexation agreement. He was almost that upset, the fact that he stormed out tonight, I think, um. Again, he's a friend, but, uh, and I, I get, I get that he's frustrated, but, uh. Uh, I don't like the way we were treated eighteenth. I don't like the way it was treated tonight.
Well, I can tell you that there's a lot of frustration of things and it feels like. If we don't, if we don't follow our code, why do we have a code?
Exactly.
I agree.
And that is frustrating.
Yes.
Like I said, we, we wouldn't have spent eighteen grand on this process.
Sure, yeah.
Um, no.
I, hindsight being twenty twenty, I'd, I'd say the same thing.
I, I would love, um, to have a amicable agreement on that. I would love for approval of that one. Uh, obviously a new attorney, gonna have some different thoughts. Um, my, our best outcome is to. Pay the out-of-town for the two taps and so. I don't wanna sell him assistance. Um, when I did bring Faye Hall up to speed, um, the, the town. That day was clear, it was gonna renew on the water taps. The county was not happy because we've gone through the process. I said, I'm going to the board. Uh, you know, I will, I will keep you posted. Uh. You know, I don't know where our next step is. I, I would like to see it completed as was approved a year ago, March. So, um, well, uh. I am so sorry that you did not have the information that I provided for you tonight. That was, uh, that was uncalled for. Um, but we'll do it again.
We'll try to get it working. I mean, I've waited eighteen months, plus nine months, right? But we'll sit down before.
Uh, I said, no.
I don't have it.
Two, six, oh.
I, I suggest to the rest of the trustees, I suggest to the rest of trustees that we, that we have the lawyer update this contract to provide services and pre-annexation agreement. Get it up to date, get it on the agenda. Let's get it, take a look at it, get it approved and moved on.
Well, the, the thing is, I, I would make a motion every table and, and. See, see what happens from there.
What's your next meeting, Mayor?
The first Tuesday.
Oh, you have a special meeting coming up?
We will have a special meeting coming up on July fifteenth.
Ooh, that sounds exciting.
We could probably get this turned around before then. If you wanna put it on your agenda for July fifteenth, um, um, your special meeting, um. I'll go through this with him and, uh, we'll try to get him on his way. Thank you, sir.
Dusty, we need a second and a vote, uh, we didn't.
Able to.
Whatever your practice is, um, if.
If you would prefer to make a motion to table it and second and go through things more than happy.
Okay, hold.
Let's just, let's just go.
Yeah. Okay.
And item number ten, discussion regarding. Delegating authority to administratively approve certain minor building permits. A memorandum from Cat Herbert, resolution number seventeen. Or B, resolution number seventeen, series of two, twenty twenty-five, a resolution of the board. Of trustees of the town of Culver, Colorado, delegating authority to administratively approve certain. Minor building permits.
I motion, we approve resolution number seventeen, series twenty twenty-five, a resolution for the board of trustees of Culver. Colorado, delegating authority to administratively approve certain minor building permits.
That's it.
So that would basically fall, fall upon, uh, if something kind of simple, simple, then that's, you can say, go ahead and.
Yeah, this has just streamlined processes, at least get kickstarts, some changes. Right now, your code is. Pretty specific that all building permits have to go before you. So this is in the spirit of trying to do things the right way. Um, and documenting that you're delegating authority to myself and Dusty. So, simple permits like roofs, furnaces, water heaters.
Okay, with, with you, you're, you're with K L D?
Yes, yes.
Um, and don't we have a, a temporary, I mean, like a, uh. They tried, tried to, it was ten thousand dollars and it was.
That's the engineer department, this is the management department. Now, we have two on-call contracts and so I might be the planning contractor.
Okay.
Yeah. So I can help answer questions on that. I'm not as aware of your engineering work.
Right. And, and what are your thoughts on this, Dusty?
I'm all for it.
Okay.
Um.
This will help save a lot of time. Most municipalities already administratively approve certain things, um, like the furnace, um. Especially there may be emergency situations where someone needs to get a permit and they need to get those, uh. Building permits through Mesa County and those are over the counter permits for the county. Um, but you're welcome to look at the resolution, at the specifics, if there's something that you'd like to change.
So, and, and I've been coming in the past with a plan. If it doesn't matter whether to build a house or change the electrical wire, I came in, I signed it along and I paid whatever, twenty-five bucks. And then I took that to Mesa County. And, and they done because they, they, they'll be inspections and such.
Right.
So.
And we still require that. We still require the filling out of the forms, spec sheets, um, re-grouping, we need to know the colors.
Yeah.
We are following the code in every aspect, um, just running it administratively between the two of us. Um, and approving those so that it not only speeds up staff efficiency, board efficiency. But your citizens aren't waiting, I believe, the last furnace permit to three months to get to.
That's unacceptable.
Uh.
Yeah, the trend is very much to delegate to staff routine to decision-making.
Oh, absolutely.
So that you don't create a bottleneck and hold up your constituents when they need a permit.
Right.
The resolution also allows for, uh, uh, us as staff to refer an application to the board if we have questions or if we're not sure. About something, especially if it might trigger public improvements. Um, so we do have that option to, um, take it before you if we're not sure. But that's just streamlining some processes and your citizens will probably be a lot happier.
Can they possibly still comment in our, like, staff packet, Dusty, our staff update, what was being approved?
Yeah, I could do a, um, a version of.
That's the only thing I'd like to request is just so we are in the loop of what's going on. And make sure the code's being followed.
Yeah, we can certainly provide a list of all, like, um, approved applications, pending applications, things like that.
That'd be great. Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Hey, we have a vote, please.
Trustee Winkle Black?
Yes.
Trustee Solly?
Yes.
Trustee Price?
Yes.
Trustee Bethel?
Yes.
Mayor Wilcox?
Yeah.
Motion, passage unanimous.
Updates on the number, item number eleven, updates on broadband and auditorium projects, um, part of this.
So she forwarded information updates on the broadband and auditorium project?
Yeah, it's on the fact.
Yeah.
If I could just get the attorney to have the, um. If you, if you can board him the dark lease agreement.
Oh, yeah, I have you review that for you.
Yeah. Cause I, I, I tried to read it, but it's pretty.
Yeah, I mean, so you're gonna have, uh, I, I guess it's ISP providers will be coming to you or, or is it individual? Uh, I think it's for ISPs, they'll say, we wanna use a certain number of fiber segments. That you have in your broadband line, um, that are inactive and you just have to come up with a. Essentially, it's a, it's a lease, you know, you're.
Right.
Around this and I, I'll take a look at it. I've seen some of these with other, uh, with other, uh, providers through regions and.
And, uh.
Just from experience and, uh, others say that. I'll, I'll reach out, uh, to the engineer, but. The rates per mile. For the town to monitor the fiber from here to the back. Uh. Just as invisible for any ISP to, to pay that, you know, two hundred and thirty dollar of the month.
Would that be a, a, a monitoring cost for the town to make sure that?
That the town has to make, once this is done. The town owns the whole thing.
Oh.
Run the CFO.
Yeah.
They're back.
And, and you don't.
So we would have to contract somebody with the expertise to, uh, contain fiber. And the equipment.
Usually what, uh, most communities are doing, um, you'll have, uh. There are a couple of different companies, um, and there are a couple of them based in Mesa County, I think, and other places too. That do, uh, they do line locates and line splicing when there's a, when there's a breach, somebody hits it with a backhoe or whatever. Um, and what local governments are doing is you, you contract with one of those line companies. And it's really just on an as-needed basis. They come out and when there's a break, they fix it. Um, and usually it's an eight-one-one process so that. If, if you have, for example, a contractor who causes a break, he's gonna get billed for it. Uh, unless it was incorrectly marked at the time the work was started. So, um, so it shouldn't. Be too expensive for the town, but you should have a contractor on standby to perform those services. Otherwise you go dark, things go dark and, you know, people get upset when they don't want their internet.
Well, that's, that's the other concern is where the, uh, plow farm and, and the fiber was placed. Uh, there's already been some, some washouts before I soil, so it's already been exposed.
And you're gonna have to maintain that. I mean, you, the town, not you personally.
Yeah, yeah. I, the, the problem that I see is some of the property owners, they will, they with their own tractors or whatever, trying to. The problem that I see is some of the property owners, they will out there with their own tractors or whatever, trying to cover it up or.
Yeah.
Filling the washout and then they become liable because they're messing with stuff and they shouldn't be messing.
Yeah, and that eight one one law is there for a reason to tell people to call ahead before they start digging. Um, but um, I'll review this for you and then I can talk with your staff about. Maybe we can see if we can find some uh, sources, uh, some of these companies you get out on standby basis to call. Um, and it really is only when you call them when you need them.
The 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 biggest benefit to the fiber or this, the the. The mid mile project is. In my view and experience, it's just the backup or redundancy.
Yeah.
Because the ISPs already have. You know, working facilities up here. There's there's some that are questioning, boy, are their radios are licensed. I know that. Some, some of the radios are overextended. Or being, you know, their space a little too far apart on an engineering standpoint. Yes, they work, but they're only gonna put out. Some, some of us, yeah, someone may wait for for a second, uh. So this mid mile. Is. That that's the only benefit that I see is, yeah, since and if there's not enough customers, if 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 the ISP doesn't have enough customers.
Yeah, I mean, it's just like your town water system. You're running the pipe to the town. So that, because it's too expensive, you can't get an ISP provider to do that on their own. So you're providing that infrastructure and then they're gonna serve your customers once you ask it close.
Pro Provo spent thirty million dollars to have fiber open Provo U C O. And once it was done, because they didn't have the expertise and they had a lot of banks going around and guys. Thought that they knew what we're doing, didn't it? Ended up selling it to Google for a dollar.
Yeah, and one of the things I'll tell you.
And it's been sold again.
You, you'll also need to budget for, and this is, you know, for your future planning. You're gonna need to budget for things like upgrading of the equipment that you have in the the C N L. Um, because you own it and you've got region ten maintaining it sort of in functionality. But when things become obsolete and they're no longer.
I completely understand.
You're gonna have to pull that stuff out and you'll have to replace it and that's gonna be one of your obligations. So like in your budgetary planning. You should probably be sending us a little bit of money aside every year um, to cover the eventual. Uh, cost of replacing.
Do that, you know, cable system because of going analog to visual and.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's it's not cheap.
Dusty, I have a question if if we can reach out to Carla about this. The old staff continuously said that um, job for the clinic and the school district had pledged uh. Pledged some money towards this project. I don't know if that's a contract, if that's a verbal um. Verbal agreement or an assumption, but um, can you find out about that for us? When you ask her about the building? Building permits and inspections.
And well, staff updates.
Well, you will see the Mesa County Sheriff's Department. Yesterday, report was there, then your packet. Um, I had a conversation today with Tammy Clark. About fireworks for Heritage Days. Um, she has purchased them. And the fire chief rescinded his approval into that. So there would be no, no fireworks. Um, at the fairgrounds on the fourth of July. Um, so she has requested reimbursement for that purchase and you guys had approved that um, up to not to exceed five thousand dollars. Um, she has requested reimbursement of three thousand seven hundred and five dollars. Her biggest question becomes, what would you like her to do with your fireworks? It's something we're, we're gonna need to discuss and does she hold on to them? Do we want her to bring them to a facility here?
Do we have a safe?
I have a vault in there, but I don't have room for three.
Well, I'm just saying, because they're ours now. We need to put them somewhere to where they're safe, correct?
Yes, and it's like I said, she came in late this afternoon and um. Said, I, he rescinded his approval. What do I do with your fireworks now? Go kind of, yeah, we had kind of touched base earlier in the week and I said, you. We're gonna need that approval in writing from the fire chief just to make sure that everything's.
Yeah, if we have place to store, I do have a. Question about our Mesa County sheriff incidents. Um, I see that we had um. One traffic stop. In the month of May in the town of Colburn and four in Colburn and larger areas. Um, can you get a list of tickets and can you talk to our officers about control and traffic on a regular basis? Cause we. We have a lot of speeding going on.
Especially in this first half to three quarters of a mile.
And yes, there's a lot of observation that.
And on the peninsula. Peninsula is big one because of the gray. Yeah. That's why if they're going because of the graves and and making the bridge. It's like we said, that the truckers today are not the truckers of of yesterday.
They can't quite make the turn when they're doing forty five a month now, they don't know why.
There's also, I think the sign there says it's supposed to be mulled or blanked.
Yeah, they are not.
And they're not.
Like it's seven in the morning, they're coming down about Jake break.
And it, and it just, yeah, through reverberates through the whole town.
Um, can we get, I don't, have you found a purchasing policy? How much the staff can per use to purchase? I don't know if you've come across it and all your digging. Um, can we get on the agenda, uh, purchase of microphones? On the next agenda, so that.
The reason that hasn't come forward yet is I don't think having blanket conversations about. Microphones without being able to present you some kind of information.
Right.
This microphone.
authorize you purchase microphones. That's it.
I have put in a request just this last week for our I T company to see if there is something they can throw together.
Okay.
To kind of give me an idea of what, what are the different options.
Okay.
Once that comes in, you'll see.
Right, and what about A D A headphones?
Yeah, that's part of it. I asked for microphones and hearing devices.
Hey, Mayor, one of the things I was thinking that, and you guys tell me what you want me to work on, but um. One of the things I see you needing, you need a master fee resolution. It covers all of your fees.
Yes.
I don't know what they are, but we need to get it adopted by you as a board. Um, and probably a purchasing policy, um, just uh, most municipalities will do that in an ordinance. And they'll specify, you know, when you've gotta do um, uh, put it out for bid. If it's over a certain dollar threshold and when you can do a less burdensome procurement process, uh, you wanna make it. You wanna make sure that the purchasing is um, efficient. In other words, you don't wanna have to go out for bid for somebody to go buy a box of pencils.
Right.
But, but you also wanna make sure your staff is getting good value for the town and I can put something in it for you.
That's, that's something that we had. Whatever, twenty, thirty years ago for the Marshals Department, they had a budget that they stuck with that budget, whether it was for any asking or whatever. Two hundred bucks a month or same, same thing with uh. Down maintenance.
Yeah.
They had a budget as long as they stayed within that budget, Paul Earls, if there was something that came up that was more expensive than it needed. Then they came before the board and and requested that.
And a lot, and a lot of municipalities will set a, an authority limit. They'll say, look, that the town administrator can. Following, if if something is within budget and they follow the purchasing procedure, they can. Spend up to X dollars and and you can decide where you wanna set that threshold. So the idea is so that your town administrator doesn't come to you every month saying. I need to spend forty dollars uh, on these office supplies. Um, and and, but but a lot of municipalities will set that fairly large at a, at a fairly high number. So that you set the budget every year, the departments know how much they can spend and then. Uh, you don't have to, people don't have to come to you every month with.
Yes.
We need to buy the X, Y, and Z. It's really only when you're doing something big like, hey, we've gotta buy a two hundred thousand dollar road grader or a. Uh, you know, a new piece of equipment at the water plant or whatever it is. That's the big ticket items. That's where you probably wanna approve those um, and make sure that you're, you know, that. The town's getting good follow.
Yep, been there, done that too.
My other question for a future agenda is uh, R F P for an engineer to go out. And um, also a resolution to have our meetings the first Tuesday. At six P M with a work session as needed at five P M. As requested by the board. Versus a works, a scheduled work session the third or whatever we have now, third Tuesday. If we can have a new. We did talk about it. Does it feel like deja vu?
Does.
Okay.
And I will say I looked at a resolution, but I'm.
Well, what happened is the previous staff put on, on the resolution, we would have a work session as needed. But then they posted that we have a work session every month.
Yeah, I think I, okay, so I've looked at the resolution.
Right.
Um, at the beginning of this year and it doesn't reference that second. And so if those aren't in that resolution. I might have already taken another. There maybe. Um, where that third, and so that's why I'm asking. For you to call this July fifteenth meeting as a special meeting because. That second meeting really isn't a part of that resolution.
Right.
So.
Yeah. Well, they put special meetings on there for a while.
Yeah, they don't, that'll be corrected because it should just be the first meeting of the month and then if you guys see fit to have that. If we need a work session, then we can schedule accordingly on that. But they're not standing meetings.
Yeah, so can you, you'll just drop that.
Yes.
On the official posting that's at every park and every.
Yes, on the website and everywhere.
I'll need to be able to get with Mike. And take it on a little tour or so, thing, the the water plant, the sewer plant.
We know nothing about our operations, which is really embarrassing for um, when the public asks us questions and we have no idea. Hey, where does your water come from? Hey, I don't know. The springs.
Do you want him to get in touch with you individually or him to get ahold of you or do you want me to coordinate?
Let's not make a call every single.
And you all want.
We want him to pick us up in the side by side.
For the agenda, I'd like to see uh, June's meetings minutes so to be approved. Cause I haven't seen June's meeting minutes.
Haven't seen May's either.
Okay.
Um, and those are on my list of things to accomplish when the time allows. Um, so yes, I am pushing to get those before you from the May. Six or nine meeting all the way to current.
Okay. Can we see the, the budget expenditures? I haven't seen them since, I think, March. For April, May, the budget expenditures?
I believe they were provided your budget, actual budget versus actually you. The beginning of May, and I'll be honest with you. Um, financials are not current, like Bruce stated. Bills are being paid, but financial, financials aren't current. So I haven't run those reports. Um, it's on my list. And I know I hate to continue to tell you guys that, I'm sorry.
You're doing great. We are completely understanding.
But I do appreciate you, Gary, reminding me and keeping me on track and making sure.
Thank you, Gary.
Because I can. Let things fall through the crack if I'm not.
Dustin, because uh, Bruce is not there for you, for me to talk to, but would you give him a little sticky note and stand a little bit apart from him? That I'd still like to see those basic essentials that have to be brought up to date. I wanna see.
Yeah, I will um, put that on his desk tomorrow morning.
Hold on a second. Did Mesa County ever talk to anybody? About dropping that Narcan box out on a main street?
I got an email from Mesa County telling me they were going to.
Okay. They don't like.
I believe it was the library district.
Yeah. Like it being on Main Street. I don't know about anybody else in town. It, to me, almost makes us look like a bunch of druggies. I, it's right, right in front of the library. I mean, literally, it's right in the middle of town. I would think it would be about behind a building here. Or at the clinic. I mean, it's a, it's a post office box that's something that just opens up, grabs whatever, and the kids are already playing with the stuff.
Yeah, that's kind of dangerous.
They're probably the safest place, I'd say. Well, you got that, you got that, well, it's not open twenty four seven access, I guess.
No, but it's an outside box. You can sit outside the building.
Do we know the side effects of taking this for fun?
Taking what?
Narcan.
Oh, I would have no idea.
Because I mean, are we, will we liable as a town for some kids to come pick this up? Do you know about this?
I know what Narcan is and no, you're not because you didn't place it here. Um, the town has governmental immunity. Most, uh, most types of claims, but what happened is it sounds like Mesa County placed the Narcan. Dispenser at their facility. Oh, it's.
We own the guys.
We own the building.
Yeah.
Cover all the expenses.
I see. Um, well, I I I don't think you have any exposure for um. Um, based on governmental immunity.
We have a choice to have it moved or removed.
I think you do. I, and I don't, I assume that they talked with you about it, but. It just showed up. Yeah, that's interesting.
Can we, can we ask for you to contact Mesa County and have that removed? That your board would request.
But if you get removed and replaced, someone's wrong.
Just removed.
There, there's a generation or whatever that it probably could have saved a couple of lives.
Right, and if somebody gets the dollar bill with fentanyl and they overdose, I get, I totally get, but don't put it on a main street. You know?
Mr. Mayor, have you seen it?
No, I'm not seeing it. I know about it. I've been told about it.
There's little kids, right?
They park them out at our library and fair shoots, so they think right on the camera where you dug out your book, so. I can tell my grandson, if it ain't yours, don't touch it.
Yeah, no doubt.
Are we done? Are we out?
To vote to have a special meeting. Do we have to both have a special meeting, Dustin? Uh, yes.
I'm trying to remember.
Let's just do it.
Why don't you just do it? Yeah. Yeah, approve it and then we.
I need a motion.
I motion we call July fifteenth, twenty twenty five, a special meeting, not a work session. For the second reading of the international codes of adoption ordinance and or anything else that in the rise.
Same. Motion second, any further discussion? We have a vote.
Sorry. Trustee Bethel?
Yes.
Trustee Winkle Black?
Gary? Gary?
Okay, let's be gone. Trustee Stally?
Yes.
Trustee Price?
Yes.
Mayor Wilcox?
Yes.
I went mute, yes.
You're good. I saw your, I saw your lips. Say yes. All right.
Okay, call this meeting adjourned.
They're gonna say that things we thought was.